I would like to call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. And I would like to thank John Shaw for that lovely prelude music. Thank you very much.[33.61][33.61][applause] Tonight, we're going to have our invocation by Rabbi Shalom Katz of Chabad of Temecula Valley. So Rabbi, if you'd come up. And Councilmember Washington, would you please lead us in the flag salute? So if you'd stand, please. And if you could, after you finish, would you please give us, after we have the flag salute, could you please give us a little update on Rabbi? Your...
Yeah, you're doing the invocation.
Honorable Mayor, esteemed members of City Council, and dedicated civil servants and beloved citizens of the city of Temecula. We stand today just a few days before the Jewish New Year, Rosh Hashanah. I would like to share with you the prayer that the high priests would say in the Holy Temple in Jerusalem on the holiest day of the year. May it be your will, Lord our God and God of our fathers, that this coming year shall be a year for your people, a year of glory, a year of good assembly, a year of song, a year of light, a year of goodness, a year of deliverance, a year of sustenance, a year of learning, a year of rest, a year of comfort, a year of joy, a year of exaltation and redemption, a year of jubilation, a year that we may hold our heads high, a year of acceptance of our prayer, a year of goodwill, a year of peace, a year of rain, a year of plenty, a year which your people will not be dependent on their livelihood upon one another, a year which you'll hold back from us, the plague and destructive foes, a year which no woman shall suffer miscarriage. I'd like to finish off with an age-old custom going back over 3,000 years. There is a tradition on the Jewish New Year to blow a series of sounds from a ram's horn known as a chofer. Our sages explain that the sounds of the chofer are similar to the cry of a child, reminding us that our relationship with the mighty God is not only that of a servant to a king or employee to employer, but most important, that we view as a child to a parent. When it comes to prayer, the most important part is to awaken our heart, our true connection to God as a child feels connected to a parent. I ask everyone to find that corner of their soul where they can arouse that strong feeling to the One Above, just as a child will cry out to a parent, the true heartfelt request that we should all be blessed with a happy, healthy, and sweet ear.[216.56][216.56][screaming]
Thank you.
Rabbi Horowitz has been here for Rabbi at the Chabad Center for over 15 years. Unfortunately, about a year and a half ago, he was diagnosed with ALS. And I'm sure everybody saw with ALS challenge how tough of a disease it is. And he needs a lot, a lot of prayers, and we're hoping for a miracle that hopefully at the next invocation, he'll be leading us.
Thank you, Rabbi. We love Rabbi Horowitz, and so we will keep him in our prayers.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Mayor, I've taken some liberties. I would like to invite up one of our special guests this evening to lead the pledge for us, Kenzie Hall. Would you please come up?
Hi, Kenzie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kenzie.
We're going to be seeing Kenzie again in just a minute. Oh goodness. It's my elbow. Could we have the roll call, please? Councilmember Comachero?
Here.
Councilmember Nigar?
I'm here, and Councilmember Washington is here as well.
What did he say at the last meeting when I wasn't here? Did he say I was here?
I don't recall.
You don't want to know what he said.
No, you don't want to go there. Councilmember Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Washington?
Here.
Mayor Edwards?
Here.
I said he was here.
In spirit. He said you're here in spirit.
We had a short meeting.
He voted for you too, Councilmember Washington, so...
Thank you.
So we...
He knows my heart.
Yes. We have some very special presentations tonight, and this one is going to start a new tradition in Temecula. Several council meetings ago, we made it possible for city residents to go to the library and to check out a city flag. You know, you can see city flag flying here at City Hall and other city buildings, but when we have parades and things, and you never see the city flag in color guards. You see the United States flag and the California flag, but you never see the city Temecula flag. Well, there's a reason, because nobody ever had access to it. So we have made two city flags available at the Temecula Library. So if you need to have a city flag, or you want to have a city flag for your color guard or your scout troop, or you have something special going on, you can actually check out a city flag with your library card and use it, and then return it to the library. And if you want to purchase a city flag, you may do so, and I will warn you, they're pretty expensive because they're custom-made, but we're trying to find a way to make them more affordable to residents who want to purchase one. But I think the Temecula residents are really proud of their city. I know that we are, and a survey that we recently had done said that Temecula residents are very proud of their city. So we have many groups and many color guards that perform ceremonies for the city of Temecula and for other organizations, and this one group of ladies particularly struck me as being very diligent and very faithful. And they do color guard and present the flags on horseback. And they actually were in our parade this year, and I was so struck by the whole ceremony and their presentation that I took it upon myself to purchase a city flag just for them. So they will be the first organization that's been presented with an official Temecula city flag. So I would like the California State Horsemen's Association, the Temecula Wine Country Cowgirl Color Guard to come down, and we're going to present them with a city flag. I actually wanted the horses to be here tonight, but we couldn't figure out a way to do that. So I think we're going to try and put a picture up if we can, and there they are. You can see them on the screen. And they do a phenomenal job. They work for at least an entire day, if not, you're going to stand right at the podium. They work for at least an entire day to groom those horses and fix them up so they look stunning. So I'm going to come down, and I have the flag with me. So I have in this bag the city of Temecula flag that you can keep for your very own and use. And so who's going to speak on behalf of the... Everybody's pointing at everybody else. Okay, come on, Silver.
Hi, Kenzie. I appreciate it.
So I see you fairly often. You know, she and I happen to sing together at Rancho Community Church, too. So you guys are busy. I mean, you do this on a regular basis, so why don't you just tell, you know, tell people how often you... How often do you do this?
Oh my gosh, I wasn't prepared for this.
Well, here, you're going to face this way so that everybody...
Oh, okay.
So you can talk to the councilmembers and tell them how often. And so here's your flag. So I'm going to get hugs, and then I'm going to go back into my chair. You're welcome.
We do appreciate this. Thank you so much. We are busy. We're busy with our lives and our work, and when we have spare time, and even when we don't have spare time, actually on Sunday, we left very early, and we spent the day at the San Diego Polo Field presenting actually more than flags to them. We actually did a routine. Here in town, we've done grand openings, and last Fourth of July, I also ride with the Sheriff's Posse, and I'm the president of the Sheriff's Posse. And this year for Fourth of July, we didn't have enough people to carry the flag in the way that it has to be done for the Sheriff's Posse. So actually, Cowgirl Color Guard stepped up, and we presented the flag. Now, there, we're going to have the city flag. We actually borrowed a city flag for the parade, and it was great, except it was about two or three times as big as the US flag and the state flag. So it's just so nice to have one that is proportional to our others. Thank you so much. Do you gals have anything to say?
We're so proud to live in a city that actually has horses on the city seal, and we're so proud that you support what we're doing.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Well, you do a great job representing us.
We get you out on a horse, Mary.
I told Silver I would come out and ride, so...
We would love it. We can make that happen. Mike wants that to happen.
Because, you know, I grew up on horses, and so, you know, that would be great. And I have ridden, but I haven't ridden in a while, so, yeah, I would love to. So you guys do a great job representing the city, so thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
So what was that?[689.11][689.11][applause]
You need to get on a horse and then on a license.
Yeah, right. Okay. Be quiet. I take all kinds of abuse up here. Bullying week is coming up pretty soon. Okay, now we have a certificate of achievement for Kenzie Hall. And Mr. Washington, would you like to talk about this a little bit?
No, go ahead.
You sure? So, Kenzie, come on up again. And, oh, you want to bring Dad, too? Proud Dad, come on up. This is a great story. Kenzie is one from a pool of 1,000 nominees nationwide that was presented the Military Child of the Year Award. So we're very, very proud of you. So I have a certificate of achievement for you, and I'm just going to read it really quick. City of Temecula Certificate of Achievement, presented on behalf of the City of Temecula City Council and the citizens of the city of Temecula to Kenzie Hall. We congratulate Kenzie Hall as one of five youths from a pool of 1,000 nominees nationwide, presented the Military Child of the Year Award from San Antonio-based Operation Home Front. Kenzie's hard work and fortitude began at the age of 11 when she formed Brat Pack 11, a social networking platform for school-based group. The group began as a resource to help military brats connect and adapt to their new surroundings. In 2013, Kenzie expanded Brat Pack 11 into a nonprofit to grant wishes and support outings and recreational activities for children of military families who have lost a parent, have had a parent injured, or have been apart from them for an extended period of time. Her goal is to bring Brat Pack 11 chapters into schools across the country where there is a significant military population. We appreciate Kenzie's leadership and heartfelt dedication to serving military children in our community and nationwide, and wish her continued success in achieving her future goals. That is an amazing story, so...[821.11][821.11][applause] As I'm bringing this down to you, why don't you introduce Dad, and then just tell us a little bit about how you got started.
Okay, this is my dad, Captain Jason Hall. Brat Pack 11 start... Oh, you can... Brat Pack 11 started when I was 11 years old and my dad deployed to Afghanistan, and it was a really tough year for my little sister and I. And I would hear about the attacks going on and things going on that my mom didn't want me to hear about necessarily. And so she spoke to my dad and talked to my little sister and I, and they told us we could live out a dream for a year. And so my little sister and I talked, and we chose acting, and, you know, that was a great escape for my little sister and I, and a place for us to go to when things got rough. And so I talked to my mom, and I told her that I think every military kid should be able to have their own escape and be able to have a place, you know, where they have, you know, a happy moment and a rough time. So it just kind of all blossomed from there.
Thank you very much. Dad, would you like to say something?
No, this is her moment. I couldn't be more proud of her. And Brat Pack 11 was formed from the heart, so it's great that she naturally wanted to do something to help military kids, because it is tough. They move around a lot. I mean, I've moved my kids around three schools in one year before. So she's had approximately, I think, 14 moves in her 16 years of life, and has been without Dad for about three of those years. So it's a great organization. It's a program under the Boot Campaign, which is a larger nonprofit that took us in in the last year. And we've been proactive in helping kids all over the nation, starting with the ones that have lost their parents overseas and paid, you know, made the ultimate sacrifice for this country. So those kids didn't have a choice of what they were born into. The parents, the spouses, they had the choice of joining the military, marrying into the military, but the kids did not. So that's kind of a forgotten demographic that we're focusing on and doing one-on-one events with, trying to let them live out a dream and let them know their sacrifice is appreciated.
Oh, we thank you so much for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Good job.[980.11][980.11][applause]
Madam Mayor, while you're returning, I just want to thank the captain and Kenzie both for your service to community and country.
And Captain, I know I'm just saying something that you already know, but you have one remarkable daughter.
Yeah.[1002.54][1002.54][applause]
So we have, we think in Temecula, we have the highest percentage of Eagle Scouts per capita. So tonight, we're going to celebrate with even more Eagle Scouts. So will Trevor Neely and Jake Palmer and Dylan Esposito please come forward? Gentlemen, so Mr. Comachero, would you like to do the honors?
Certainly.
I don't know if I have practice copies or not. If I don't, you'll have to come and retrieve. Let's see. Okay. So here are your pins.
Trevor, while she's doing that, how old are you now?
Fifteen.
So when we moved into our house, we're neighbors of theirs, he was two. Can you imagine that kid at two?
Like...
Yeah. It's amazing what they do.
They do get bigger, don't they? And I'll tell you, as a mother, it gets easier, but it never gets cheaper. So I have Jake's first. So Jake, here's a certificate for you, and it says, City of Temecula Certificate of Achievement for Jake Palmer of Troop 624. We congratulate Jake for his achievement on receiving the rank of Eagle Scout. We're proud to present Jake with this award, and we wish him success in his future accomplishments. And Mayor Potem Comachero has something very special for you. And this one is for Trevor.
I got it right. That's the certificate that the mayor just read. And as she said, we have something very special. And as I recall, I think it was you who initiated the program back a number of years ago, but we had a special pin crafted and made just for Eagle Scouts. And I'm happy to say that, I don't know how many we've ordered over the years, but I think we've kept the company in business. It's remarkable how many Eagle Scouts we have in this city, so congratulations.
Now, hang around, because we're going to talk to you in a second. So who's Trevor? Trevor, thank you. All right, so Trevor, Trevor, you're also from Troop 624, right? We congratulate Trevor for his achievement on receiving the rank of Eagle Scout, and we're proud to present you with this award, and we wish you success in your future accomplishments. And you will also get an exclusive City of Temecula Eagle Scout pin.
Congratulations. Here's your pin. Well done.
And Dylan, you're from Troop 301, correct? Dylan Esposito of Troop 301, we congratulate you for your achievement on receiving the rank of Eagle Scout, and we're proud to present you with the award, and we wish you success in your future accomplishments. And we're going to hear about your Eagle Scout projects in just a second, because we want to know how hard you worked, and who were the beneficiaries of your hard work?
You're welcome.
Because we know you have to organize a project from start to finish, and so we love hearing that. So who wants to go first?
I think Trevor wants to go first. All right, so my margarita, oh no, my middle school, Margarita Middle School, the parking lot was kind of barren, looked like a desert. So I decided to beautify it and put it, I put bushes, flowers, wood chips, rocks, and many people helped, and it was a really cool project, and it was really cool seeing it all come together.
So like in all the planter beds and things?
Yeah.
Oh, very nice. And did you put your whole troop together as a team?
Yeah.
And you had to raise money to buy everything or get it donated, one of the two?
Uh, donated.
Very good. Excellent. And who wants to go next?
Yes, I'll go.
All right.
All right, my project was over a year and a half period, and I ended up setting a bunch of flags throughout the Meadowview community, and also hosted a Fourth of July flag-raising ceremony. And I did this on certain holidays, like Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Veterans Day. And I did it for a year, and then a little bit after. And, you know, it was really cool to increase the patriotism in the community and see it all come together. It was a lot more work than anticipated, but it was worth it.
So when you said you set flags, did you do it at people's homes? Did you do it on corners, or what did you do?
We did it on main roads and also, since it was a lot of setting up and took a lot of time and a lot of scouts, homeowners started, like, adopting flags, and they would put them up in front of their homes so we could spread farther.
Mr. Roberts? They were in Meadowview doing that. Did you participate?[1305.65][1305.65][laughter] They were setting up flags in Meadowview on holidays. Were you a good Meadowview resident?
Yes.
Or were you calling code enforcement, saying people are out here setting up flags?[1318.83][1318.83][laughter]
I took care of his flag for him.
Oh, good. Mr. Washington?
Yeah.
Did you participate?
I got his back.
Okay.[1329.58][1329.58][laughter] They were apparently good Meadowview residents while this was going on, so that's very good.
I think we have a candidate for another city flag. I think you need to go buy one.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Roberts, are you here?
Sam.
Yeah. Did Meadowview not look beautiful over the past year and a half during holidays?
Well, Meadowview has always looked beautiful.
Yes. And especially...
That's a plug for Meadowview.
And especially beautiful since they were...
Especially beautiful during Memorial Day and that...
And Fourth of July and Veterans Day.
And don't forget Christmas, too.
And Christmas. Did you set up flags for Christmas?
No.
Oh.[1367.83][1367.83][laughter] Nice try, though, Mr. Roberts.
All right.
So, I mean, so is, do you think the residents are going to, have they started that tradition now, do you think?
Well, we turned over all the flags to Meadowview recently, and so, because they said they wanted to keep setting them up.
Excellent.
And we've seen a few homeowners here and there put them up.
Great.
And, yeah.
Well, it's a wonderful community, so I bet you they do keep it up. Excellent. And so what did you do?
What I did was I repaired and enhanced my old elementary school garden at Rancho Elementary School.
I love Rancho.
I repainted the box, the planter boxes they had there. I planted mulch, and I created a new irrigation system.
Just in time for school to start?
Yes.
So they started school with, and the garden was ready to go and plant?
Yeah.
Oh, that's wonderful. You guys did a great job. So congratulations on your Eagle Scout achievement.[1424.15][1424.15][applause] Okay, let's get this party started. Moving on to public comments. A total of 30 minutes is provided so members of the public may address the City Council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the City Council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the City Council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filed with the city clerk prior to the City Council addressing that item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, and I do know that we have some public comments.
We do, Madam Mayor. We have five speakers under public comment, and the first speaker is Julie Paul, to be followed by Mark Marjolin.
Hi, Julie. Oh, you brought some Cubs.
I have craters.
I just toured some Cubs this afternoon.
I caught you.
Yeah, you did.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I'm Julie Polly, and I am the membership chair of Cub Scout Pack 337. And I'm here tonight to share with the community our recruitment event. So if you have young men, first grade to fifth grade, that might be interested in Cub Scouts, we would love to meet you on Sunday, September 21st, at one of your fire stations on Enterprise Circle West at 1:00 PM. We are having our annual egg drop, and that's where our Cub Scouts and folks that are interested in joining us. Everyone gets the same materials to pack an egg safely in a box, and then one of Temecula's finest will drop it from the top of the crane, and of course, the one that survives the highest drop wins. So it's a great family event. There's absolutely no parent participation, so it's really, it brings out the inner MacGyver in our boys. So it's a really fun event. So if you're interested in checking out Cub Scouts, come join us. We would love to meet you, and it's just a really great program for our boys.
So that's a fire station on Enterprise Circle?
Mm-hmm. On Sunday, September 21st at 1:00 PM, and our website is cubscoutpack337.com.
Sounds like a lot of fun.
It is a lot of fun, so thank you very much.
Thank you. No, Mr. Washington, you cannot join the Cub Scouts. Thank you.
I want some Cub Scout all over.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, our next speaker is Mark Marjolin, to be followed by Richard Lemire.
Mr. Mark, I got your email this week.
And that's not what I'm here to speak about.
Okay, good.[1610.15][1610.15][laughter]
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, and especially to the high school students and parents in the audience this evening. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Sixth Annual Temecula College and Vocational Invitational, which is coming up on Saturday, September 20th, between 10:00 and 2:00 o'clock at the Promenade in Temecula. As I said, this is the sixth year that the city has sponsored this college fair. It's grown into one of the largest fairs in Southern California, and we're very proud that it's here in Temecula. The fair this year will have approximately 200 colleges, trade schools, and career and technical services from all over the United States. All of the UC campuses will be represented, as will most of the Cal State campuses, as well as a variety of private and public institutions from throughout the United States. We have both professional admissions representatives who come from many of the institutions, as well as local volunteers like myself. I'm an alumnus of Johns Hopkins University, and I always represent Johns Hopkins at the fair. And we have a variety of people in the community, especially many of our teachers in the community who come and represent their alma mater at the fair. We're expecting about 7,000 students and parents this year, and that's an absolutely amazing number. The folks at the Promenade tell us that this is next to possibly Black Friday. This is one of their biggest days of the year. The city enjoys a sales tax bump that day every year because of the traffic at the mall. But more importantly, we give the opportunity to all of the students and parents in the community and from the surrounding communities to come out and meet with representatives from 200 colleges and trade schools and other career training services, learn about them, and investigate where they may want to apply and where they may want to study in the future. So we hope that everybody will join us. That's Saturday, the 20th, between 10:00 and 2:00 o'clock at the Promenade in Temecula.
And it is awesome, and you're always there, so thank you, Mark, for doing it.
It's always my pleasure to be there, and we truly appreciate the support of the city. Charles Walker and his team always do a wonderful job pulling that together, and it's a great event for the community.
Yeah, it is so much fun. I always go. It's so much fun. Thank you, Mark.
Mm-hmm.[1760.15][1760.15][applause]
Madam Mayor, next we have Richard Lemire, to be followed by Jennifer Smith. Mr. Lemire, how are you?
Very good, thank you. Honorable Mayor, City Council, it's a pleasure to be here. I say you never want to follow kids or animals, and yes, the great kids and the horses and everything, so, but I'm going to come forward, and I'm here from the Community Action Partnership of Riverside County, which is the county's anti-poverty agency, and we're actually celebrating 50 years of community action this year. And one of the things that we're doing is bringing a poverty simulation... Uh, and one of the things that, uh, we're doing is bringing a poverty simulation to Temecula. And that's going to be next Tuesday, uh, Tuesday morning, from 9:00 to 12:30 at the Community Recreation Center. And what a poverty simulation is, it's an opportunity to kind of get into the shoes of a person, uh, that lives poverty. You spend about an hour, uh, going through a month of, uh, simulated activity, taking the role of, uh, of a family member, even a child, and to see really, really what, uh, what people have to face on a daily basis. It's a real eye-opening experience. There's no cost for it, uh, so we invite, you know, all of you are invited to, uh, to attend, to participate. Uh, certainly the members of the community would like to, uh, make that invitation out to the, uh, to the folks in the community also. We have about sixty that are signed up now, so it's going to be a very, very, uh, busy morning and a very eye-opening experience. Uh, we're doing this in partnership with Catholic charities. They, they actually have the, uh, all the materials, which was actually formulated by Missouri Community Action Agency, so, um, uh, and the Rotary Club of Temecula is also co-sponsor, and, and they, um, covered the, uh, the fees to rent the, uh, recreation center. So, uh, thank you, and Chuck, that's your club, so, uh, let them know how much we appreciate it. Your club, too. All right. Well, I didn't see the one he had at the meeting.
I actually go to the meetings, though.
All right. But, uh, we thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, thank the Rotary Club, and uh, invitation is open to all. It's, as I said, a real eye-opening experience, and uh, we hope to see you there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have Jennifer Smith, to be followed by Wayne Hall.
Hi.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. How are you tonight? Um, thank you very much for the opportunity to come and talk to you and to the esteemed councilmen. Um, I'm not a public speaker, nor am I a politician, but I am a parent. Um, and I wanted to take this opportunity to bring what we think is a very exciting opportunity, um, and community forum that's going to be happening on September 18th, here in the chamber itself, in this beautiful building. The flyer is down there, yeah. On September 18th at 6:00 PM, in this chamber, four vested community organizations are coming together to host and facilitate a professionally moderated, nonpartisan forum, Q and A forum, for the candidates running for the new Temecula Valley Unified School District Board and the open seats that will be happening in November. Um, the vested org, the vested organizations are our Nicholas Foundation, AOTS Group, Comprehensive Autism Center, and the Temecula Valley Therapy. All of these vested agencies are the pinnacle in their field with real active involvement here in the City of Temecula. This exciting, exciting event will enable the special education community, which I'm a part of, to come together and share their concerns with prospective board members and the decision-makers that will be affecting their children in the next coming year. I'm a parent of five children that's receiving services under the IDEA, and I can't tell you as a parent what it means to me to have the opportunity to exchange in a democratic process, where my voice can actually impact the people that will be making the decisions for my children going down the road. It's, um, uh, an amazing opportunity to have that exchange, to be able to, you know, exchange ideas and beliefs, and find out where they stand on the issues that really are impacting our community. Um, so I'm here tonight first to share that the event is going on, um, even though it is for special education parents, um, families that have typical learners. It impacts them, too, because it's all our tax dollars. So we invite everyone to come on out and find out what's going on, and then also to invite you to come and take part and, and attend, because we don't have community unless we all unite. So I thank you for your time.
If you want to leave that, well, we'll see if we can maybe post it on the-
Wonderful.
Put it on the city calendar for you.
Wonderful, and I made a bunch of copies, and I'm willing to leave those wherever it's convenient for you.
That'd be great.
May I ask a quick question? If you can put that back up real quick, I'd like to see it real quick. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven candidates-
Seven candidates.
For school board. Have you gotten confirmation from all seven? Will they all be in attendance?
We've gotten confirmation from all seven. Only five will be attending. The incumbents have opted out.
Okay, so the incumbent school board members are not going to be in attendance-
They will not be participating, no, sir.
Interesting. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
That disappoints me greatly. I have to say publicly, um, while you're here speaking, um, this was a perfect opportunity for them to, um, to, uh, opine on a, on a topic that has been at the forefront of Temecula's citizens here for the past four or five years, and, and the fact that they opted out is very disappointing.
You know, there's a lot of, you know, definite issues, and for a parent that has five children that is receiving services in our district, um, it's a little disheartening to not have the people that are already making decisions and are running for a seat, elected seat again. I think that it's, you know, people don't understand, these are elected officials, just like you guys. You all have to go out and campaign, and you have to share your thoughts and ideas, and impress upon them where your belief system lies. And for, as a parent, you know, um, to not have the people that are already in office making decisions that are seeking reelection, to opt out is a little disappointing, to say the least. But we do have participation from the, the five people that are seeking new seats in office, and they're eagerly anticipating it. They're actively engaged in the process. Um, so I, I do believe that we will have a very exciting event.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
And it's gonna, it's in the council chambers, not in the-
Yes, it will be right here at 6:00.
Oh, no, I see.
Um, and it will be a, um, professionally moderated, and it's nonpartisan in nature. All questions, all of the organizations have screened their constituency and asked for the top 10 things that are really affecting our community as a whole. And then the moderator was, submitted all of the questions, and he's been diligently going through to make sure that they are nonpartisan, that they will, um, cover the bandwidth of all people seeking services.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and receiving services. Thank you.
Hi, Wayne.
Hey, there. I hate to be a downer tonight, but I saw something in a newspaper and kind of tugged at my heart. Uh, a while back, we had a horrific accident here in Temecula, and some children killed. Four of our students, a father, a young man that was, uh, fleeing the law as well, was killed as well. And that's not what I'm here for tonight. This young man was sentenced to, uh, serve 15 years per life. I'm not going to say death, life. Well, apparently our legislator has changed the rules. Now, apparently our students are only worth less than four years of life. Now, I know that's kind of an ignorant thing to say, and it's not a right thing to say, but it basically, if you do the math, and that's the way it turns out. But my main point is, this was the darkest day in Temecula's history, the darkest. The legislator made a change without, what's the word that was used at the meeting? Um, unforeseen circumstances. There was a couple other ways, but the point was they passed a law without really looking at it. They passed a law. They gave some bureaucrats somewhere in the state of California the right to say, "Oh, this guy here's got too much, too many years to serve, so we're going to slash that." They didn't go into all the reasons why, what actually happened. During the darkest day of Temecula, which tore the city apart, and my heart went out to, uh, one of my favorite mayors of Temecula at the time, Pat Berthold. She had to go, go to Washington, and I'm sure Rod remembers those days, too, as well as some others.
Mm-hmm.
But I'd like the city manager, if, with your concurrence, to write a letter to the, the parole, the parole board, and basically saying that you didn't look at all the facts. You didn't see how it tore the hearts out of the people here in Temecula at the time. Now, yeah, that was 15 years ago, but when you lose a child, you don't really forget that quickly, do you? And I know I, I, so, so far I've been very lucky. I've had two of them hurt to the point, but luckily they survived, both. But I would, if, with the city council's concurrent, to write a letter to the parole board saying how, well, say what you, you think it needs to be said, basically. But the point that burns my cookies, they made a law without really saying it all the way through. Our representatives made this law without realizing the far-reaching and long-term effects that this will happen down the road. And of course, when you get, well, we can go on and on about this, but I'm, I'm not going to, but I'm very hurt, not disappointed, I'm hurt. These were our children. They deserved better. And our representatives did us wrong on this one, and I'm calling them both out. In fact, I'm calling them all out. I don't care. If you're a politician, you better watch out, because I'm watching. And I believe in it. It's time to clean the slate and to start over, because what we got right now, unless, some people like what's going on back in DC and Sacramento, which is just hunky-dory.
Your time's up, Wayne.
We need to replace them. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you. So, okay, so you're, you're signed up for, for council comments, right? You didn't want to answer any of the speakers. All right. I'm talking to Mike, because his name was up first.
Negative, negative.
Okay. All right. So we are going to move on to city council reports, and everybody just disappeared.
Listen there.
Okay, okay, Jeff.
Mr. Hall, thank you for bringing up, uh, that issue. I, I have to tell you, I, I kind of have, not kind of, I do have mixed feelings, while I agree with you wholeheartedly. Um, it brings back memories that I and a lot of others would probably prefer weren't brought to the fore at this point. I, uh, John Davis, who was killed, was my closest friend, and the reason my wife and I moved to Temecula. And, uh, I've stayed close with his widow for years. Uh, I know that the last thing she wants is to see this dragged up all over again, so, um, while I concur, uh, that it's a travesty, uh, and I would like to see the city manager draft a letter, but, uh, at least from the city perspective, I, I'd rather we not, um, blast it all over the place, uh, and make more of an issue out of it than that, in deference to the family and for no other reason. So thank you, Wayne.
Okay, any other comments, city council members? No? Okay, then I'm going to move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted with one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number one, standard ordinance and resolution adoption procedure. Number two, action minutes. Number three, list of demands. Number four, city treasurers report as of July 31st, 2014. Number five, meeting schedule for city council meetings for the months of November and December. Number six, accept the notice of draft amendments for the 2014 Conflict of Interest Code. Number seven, Twin Cities Transit Center Letter of Support. Number eight, acceptance of certain public streets into the city maintained system within track map 241883, located in the southwest corner of Butterfield Stage Road and Pabba Road within the Paseo del Sol development. Number nine, acceptance of certain public streets into the city maintained system within track map 32319, located near the intersection of Boulder Way and Shasta Lane in Wolf Creek Development. Number 10, approval of plans and specifications and authorization to solicit construction bids for Inez Road Pavement Rehabilitation, Jedediah Smith Road to Vallejo Avenue, PW 12-12. Number 11, approval of parcel map 36413, located at the southwest corner of Deportola Road and Margarita Road.
Madam, uh-
Mr. Comachero.
Mayor, uh, I'm going to be registering an abstention on item 11, uh, the reason being the parcel in question is in close proximity to the Temecula Valley Hospital, and I sit on the board of directors of the hospital.
All right. Registering an abstention on number nine for Mayor Potem Comachero.
On number 11.
I mean, number 11.
And the only thing to add to that is, and he doesn't need to leave the room unless somebody pulls it.
Okay, so he will be staying, but abstaining. Anything else?
I'll be abstaining from item number two, minutes of August 26th, as I was in Monte Carlo getting on a train to Paris on that day.
I think you can leave the part off about Monte Carlo and the train to Paris, but you can show the abstention, I believe, on item number two, for Councilmember Washington. In that case, I will entertain a motion. Please.
So moved.
Mr. Roberts, thanks for moving, and a second, I will second. You guys, don't make me pull this. Day is over. And cast your votes, please. And that is unanimous. Thank you.
With the extensions as noted.
With the extensions as noted.
Thank you.
Leaving out the part about Monte Carlo and getting on the train. Okay, in that case, I'm going to recess the Temecula City Council meeting and hand it over to Mayor Potem Comachero for the Temecula Community Services District meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order. Uh, let the record show, Madam Clerk, that we are all here this evening. Do we have any public comment under this portion?
We do not.
Thank you. Uh, we'll go right ahead then into the consent calendar. Item 12 is consideration of approval of the action minutes of the meeting of August 26th. Item 13, First Amendment to Purchase and Installation Agreement with Pacific Play Systems, Inc., for the Special Needs Playground, PW 12-02. Uh, Mr. Washington, I'm assuming you'll register an abstention, uh, because you were in Paris and Monte Carlo and all that stuff.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And so with that-
I'll move the item.
We have a motion by Mr. Nigar, a second by, uh, Madam Mayor, Mrs. Edwards. Please cast your vote. And that motion does carry 5-0 with the abstention on the minutes as noted for Mr. Washington. Do we have, I know we have, a director's report, uh, Mr. Hawkins, this evening?
Yes, we do, sir. Um, lest we never forget, it was 13 years ago, September 11th, 2001, when this nation was forever changed. Please join us at 6:00 PM this Thursday for September 11th Memorial and Time of Reflection at the Temecula Duck Pond. The City of Temecula understands the benefits of overall health and wellness and encourages residents to participate in the 2014 Run for Fitness 5K and 10K. Race time begins on Sunday, September 14th at 10:00 AM sharp, and check-in will start at 6:30 AM. For more information, please contact Jeff Lawrence in Community Services, 694-6410. Also on Saturday, September 27th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 o'clock, please join us here at the Civic Center for the Fourth Annual Temecula Health and Community Resources Fair. This resource fair is a great opportunity for individuals, families, and professionals to come out and obtain information on health-related resources and available products and services for children, families, seniors, and individuals with special needs. Health screenings, free flu shots, a Q and A with a doctor and a pharmacist, free samples, entertainment, and much, much more are in store. A reminder that the main event contributor, Temecula Valley Hospital, who is celebrating their one-year anniversary, will also be on hand. So for more information, please call 694-6464. And finally, we rely almost on every department to put on so many of our community services events. And after completing another successful summer filled with activities, it seems like we really were constantly leaning heavily on our public works, IT, police, and finance friends to pull off so many of these, uh, special events for our community. And for that, Tom, Michael, Chief, and Jen, a simple thanks to you and your outstanding teams from Community Services. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Well said, Mr. Hawkins. Uh, Mr. Adams, do you have anything further?
Uh, nothing further. That was well said. Thank you all.
Okay, any, uh, director's reports?
Great summer.
It wa, it was a great summer, a very active summer.
Yes, thank you.
But seeing, uh, no further reports, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion, and second, seeing no objection, we stand adjourned.
All right, then I am, I am going to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting, and do we have any city manager report, sir?
Nothing further tonight, Madam Mayor.
City Attorney, anything?
Nothing tonight.
In that case, I will adjourn to the meeting of September 23rd, if I have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Nigar.
For discussion, could we talk a little bit about Mr. Roberts, Meadowview, and Christmas and flags?
I don't believe, I don't-
Just a little bit.
I don't, I don't believe there's any sentiment for that, no, Mr. Nigar.
The high school students have stayed till eight.
Yeah, high school students.
We have time.
Any sentiment for you staying until eight?
Call for the question.
Call for the question. I'm in favor. I, we stand adjourned. You do not have to stay until 8:00 o'clock.